Good, so maybe let's say a quick word of prayer. The Lord will lead us through this Bible study and remind all those who are meant to be with us today to join us. Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for making it possible for us to come together once more to study your word and to get to know you better, Lord. Father, even as we, we know that you are always more than willing to share your truth with us. We ask you to prepare our hearts, Lord God, make us willing and obedient. Father, let us be willing to take your word on board, to change our way of thinking, to renew our minds, that we may benefit from your word, that we may be doers and not just hearers of your word. Thank you in Jesus's name we pray, amen. So, we started talking about the basics of spirit, soul and body and I think one of the things we ended on, or we ended on this note that it's not so much about knowing all the technicalities of this because it is still probably beyond our ability to understand. I mean, God took a lifeless body that he had made from the earth and then breathed into it and became a human being. I mean, there are so many unanswered questions, you know? How do you go from soil onto a body that has organs? How do you go from soil to different cells in the human body? And also all the microscopic level, you know, all the chemicals that support the human body? Oh, there are so many unanswered questions. So, a lot of this we're taken by faith, but the Bible tells us that we are made up of body, spirit and soul. And the importance of understanding this is that it helps us to understand some of the concepts that will come up later in the New Testament when we start to read more about what God has prepared for us in terms of our salvation. Salvation is a package that has been given to us that we need to open up and enjoy its benefits. And what we'll discover is that the package is here. Okay, everything that has been given to us has been given to us in the spirit. And our whole life is about making what's here manifest in our soul and body and to the outside world. That's really what we are here to do. Salvation begins with a new birth and that new birth leads to a new spirit within us. A spirit that is willing, a spirit that is able to communicate with God. Before we are born again, before we've believed and committed our lives to Christ, we may have the thoughts, we may have inclinations to try and please God here. But because here we are not aligned with God, what will happen is that we drift. We have, we might get interested, I remember my own experience where, you know, I attended many evangelistic meetings and attended many, turned up for many, what they call altar calls, altar calls, and prayed the sinest prayer many times, but it didn't lead to any lasting change. You know, I would be willing kind of, but nothing would really happen because the change within hadn't happened. So, it's the change within that changes everything. Okay, and what we are trying to understand by studying the subject of salvation is we want to understand what actually happened within us, okay? But we're going to take it step by step. We, last week, we just did this introduction of spirit, soul and body, but we're going to go back to the salvation package and gradually peel off the layers. And then we will revisit spirit, soul and body so that you can piece everything together and begin to see. So, this is what God has done for us. And the reason why we would do that is not so that we can have something to share with others, although it is important, but so that we can begin to benefit, okay? Everything that God has given us through Christ, Jesus, he packaged it and he put it in our spirit. That's where it is. That's where healing is. That's where healing is. Many, in Africa especially, people go and attend meetings, crusades, et cetera, looking for healing. It's okay for an un-believer to do that. It's okay for someone who doesn't have the spirit of God living inside of him to do that. That's fine, but when you have, you have the spirit of God in you, it's like you are ignoring God. You're ignoring God and then going to present yourself before someone else who has the same God as you. God wants us to be able to reach inside and draw out the wealth that he has placed in us. That's what salvation is all about. For us to benefit from the salvation, we must discover the ways in which we can dig, we can literally dig deep into ourselves and bring out all the goodies that God has placed there, okay? Okay, so we said that man is spiritually dead before salvation. This means that he is unable to operate spiritually. He is unable to connect with God in the way that God wants to be connected with. But when we are saved, we are made alive. The Bible says, "You who were dead, he made alive." You were dead in trespasses and sins, he made alive. He wasn't talking about physical death, but spiritual death, made alive. So, salvation wakes us up. You suddenly realize that there's a new reality inside you. But even though people may be suggesting one thing to you or another, you're not really drawn to those things because within you there is a power that is much stronger than what's drawing you from the outside. That is salvation. That's what salvation brings to us. So, when we first started salvation, we said that salvation has got, when we started the topic of salvation, we said that it has many facets and the Bible often uses different terms to describe the same thing. It will approach the same topic from different angles and it's the same thing with salvation, okay? Now, because Jesus has something like, "What shall it profit a man if he shall gain the whole world but lose his soul?" Okay, so that means that you saving the soul is the most important thing. But elsewhere you'll see he will tell you that something else is the most important thing. And when you piece everything together, what you'll discover is that it is talking about the same thing, but it's got many facets. So, salvation sometimes is spoken of in terms of justification. And justification emphasizes the legal aspects of our salvation. Because in justification, what does God do? He forgives us our sins. He sets us free from the legal obligations, from the legal, what was, what's the word I was looking for? The legal requirements, the, you know, whatever bound us to him, to, you know, to whatever we owed him, God has paid himself and that sets us free. So, it's, we are like convicted criminals whom God has set free. Redemption comes with a similar connotation, except that here it's talking about redeeming something that was yours, that maybe you lost or maybe somebody acquired it and you have to buy it back. So, in redemption, God emphasizes the price that he paid to set us free. If justification just looks at the legal aspect, the fact that we're going from guilty to acquitted. In redemption, we go from being bound, being chained, to being set free. Then there's reconciliation, which looks at how that we were enemies of God, but he has brought us near, okay? Then we've got the new birth, which emphasizes the change that happens in the believer and his identity in Christ. Then we have adoption, which emphasizes our placement as sons and part of God's family. So, the same thing is spoken of in different ways, okay? The benefits of salvation, we've been forgiven and because we've been forgiven, we have peace with God. Now, in the Old Testament days, God asked, first God asked Moses to erect the temple, which was called the tablak of the congregation. This tablak had two chambers and an outer court. The outer court is where the people could worship. The first chamber was called the holy place and only priests were allowed to go there. In Luke chapter 1, when Zachariah, the father of John the Baptist, went to the temple to light the candle, what he was doing was he was going into that first chamber, the holy place. But there was a second chamber called the most holy place, which no one had access to but the high priest. And he could only go there once a year. And he could only go there after offering a sacrifice for himself. In other words, even he was not worthy to approach God because that most holy place, it signified the presence of God. There was the Ark of the Covenant and the lid of the Ark of the Covenant was what they called the mercy seat, which was made of two cherubims, which are like warring angels. And a Jewish historian wrote that the high priest in those days when he went into the most holy place, once a year, on the day of atonement, what the Jewish, the Jewish festival of Yom Kippur, he would go in, they would tie a rope around his legs as he went in there. The idea was that if he made a mistake there and if he died, no one had the right to go in there to get him. They had to pull his body out. That's why they tied a rope around his, like, that's just to show you just how forbidden it was to go into, into the most holy place. But what did Jesus do? When he hung on that cross on that day, the Bible says darkness fell over the nation and the curtain or the veil that separated the first chamber from the second chamber was torn in two, from top to bottom, to show you that it was supernatural. That thing was quite high. No one could reach it. It was torn from top to bottom to show you that that was supernatural. And when it was torn, it meant that if somebody was standing in the outer court, he could look and see all the way into the most holy place that was forbidden. But because Jesus paid the price, it was torn, the veil was torn in half and you could see it. And the New Testament tells us, that's to show you the way to the most holy place has now been laid there, has now been made. It is now possible for you and I to go into the presence of God. We have peace with God. It means when you're coming into presence, into his presence, you have nothing to be afraid of. You have nothing to worry about. We've been set free from bondage to sin and legal indebtedness. That's exactly the word I was looking for. And translated from one kingdom to another. We live in times where Christians, as Christians, we struggle with one issue or the other. The devil tormenting us in this issue or the other. But the reason why something like that can happen is because we haven't understood our status. Years ago, I came across a guy. This guy was, he was living in the UK with his wife. He had just joined his wife. His wife had been here for a long time and she was working and then he came to join her, but this guy couldn't go out. He was indoors all the time. And I think I was working for an agency and this lady, she came and she said, "Please, can you get this, my husband, a job to work?" I said, "Does he have the right to work?" She said, "Yes, he has the right to work." So, why is he not working? What I found out was that this guy, even though he had all the rights to work in the country, he had been told that he couldn't and that if he did, he could get into trouble. And he believed it. So, because he believed it, he was holding himself back. All that this guy needed to start enjoying his rights because his wife had indefinite leave to remain and he, you know, as a spouse, he, there were no restrictions on his visa. He could work. He could do anything he wanted. Yet somebody had managed to frighten him and because of that he was holding himself back. That's the picture of many of us. We are holding ourselves back. And the reason why we're holding back is because, pardon me, we haven't understood what Jesus did for us. Many of us, we know about the devil's shenanigans more than we know about Christ. We know more about what the devil can do. I remember listening to a sermon once where the pastor was saying that we have a wicked enemy. We had, we have a powerful enemy and, oh brethren, we must hang on to God because we have a horrible enemy. I said, "What is this guy trying to do? Who is he magnifying here?" You said sentence after sentence talking about the power of the devil. The Bible doesn't do that. The Bible doesn't teach us to focus on the power of the devil. The Bible encourages us to focus on God. Our eyes must be focused on the king, on him who died and gave his life unto us, I mean, as a ransom for us, so that we might be set free. And translated from one kingdom, the kingdom of darkness, Colossians chapter 1, around verse 15, talks about that. Translated from one kingdom into another, from darkness into light. It has happened. It's a fact. It is not something that is going to happen. It has happened and the only reason why you might not experience it is because you don't know. Just like that guy who had the right documents, yet didn't believe he could work. Many of us, we have all the rights of a child of God, but we don't believe that we can stand in the authority that's been given to us. And we're constantly crouching and bowing and ducking and afraid. We're not able to be confident because we haven't understood what Christ has done for us. Christ has done an awful lot. He has empowered us to know and to do the will of God. That's one of the benefits of salvation. Jesus has made it possible for you and me to know the will of God. That alone is a big problem for people, but not just that, to do the will of God. He has made the provision. Again, you won't walk in that power unless you understand it. So, you discover that knowledge in Christianity is a major issue. My people perish for lack of knowledge. For lack of knowledge, without vision, the people perish. We've been given an inheritance in Christ. We have an inheritance that begins to manifest here on earth. And then will also manifest in the kingdom to come, in the age to come. We are supposed to stand in an inheritance. There's something God has prepared for you and me here in this earth. You and I got saved for a reason. When, you remember the story of Esther? Esther won a beauty contest and she ended up as queen. After, well, Rastie, the original queen had disrespected her husband. The husband decided, you know, I'm going to have a new wife. In those days, people could do whatever they wanted. And so, he essentially, you know, organized a beauty contest and decided that he had married the winner and that winner was Esther. It was a Jewish girl, but she had hidden her identity because her uncle or like a cousin had told her, "That's what you must do." So, no one knew that she was a Jewish girl, but she was in the palace. And God, in typical fashion, God sends the solution ahead of the problem. He sent Joseph to Egypt ahead of the problem. There was going to be famine the 13 years or whatever later. So, he sent Joseph ahead of them. And when the time came, there was already food in Egypt and the Israelites could just move there and they looked after. That's God's provision. That's why Joseph told his brothers that, "You meant it for evil, but God meant it for good." Sometimes some things may happen in your life and you may pray and want to see change. By the way, pray and stand in faith and resist every evil that comes in your way. But even if you don't see instant, instant victory, don't worry. God is able to make all things work together for the good of those who love him. And that's what happened. Now, Esther was in the palace when trouble broke out. Haman, the enemy of the Jewish nation, decided to put together a plot to kill all the Jews. Mordecai heard about it and sent a message to Esther saying, "If you don't do something about this, salvation will rise up from somewhere else." God will use someone else to save his nation because he has a covenant with this nation and he cannot allow the nation to perish. But you, do you know if you came to this kingdom at such a time as this because of such a time as this? In other words, how do you know that the reason why you were born was to be in the palace at this particular day and time and to bring deliverance to your nation? Esther understood the message and she did what she had to do and saved her nation. Likewise, you and I have been brought into the kingdom of God for a specific reason. Not all of us are going to stand on the, on the big stage and preach like Billy Graham or someone else. Not all of us are going to do that and it's not necessary. But whatever your role is, again, not everybody's going to be a preacher. I believe some people, they will just be businessmen. That's what God has called them to do. God doesn't need everybody preaching. Some people will just be businessmen. Some people will just be nurses. But whatever it is that he's giving you to do, you do it as unto the Lord and you glorify him through what you do so that people can look at you and think, "Oh, there's something about him. There's something about her. I can't quite make out what it is, but there's definitely something about him, which itself gives you an opportunity to share Christ with them." So, you and I have an inheritance here on earth. Nobody came to hang around and just check out. Everybody came to this earth for a specific reason. And that's part of your inheritance. There are things God wants to do through your life to leave a certain legacy behind. Years ago, we used to teach in the children's church and we, and it was difficult to get people to, to recruit people to join us to teach in the children's church. So, we told, I mean, I remember this, I thought came to us and we, my wife and I, and we said to people, "How many of you know Billy Graham's Sunday School teacher? Or some other popular big man of God? How many of you know their Sunday School teacher or their children's church teacher? No, you don't. But if those people hadn't done their job, would you see that man there?" The answer is possibly, "No." In order to, for someone to get to that position of prominence, there are people that God has to put on their path. And you might be one of those people. And when we get to heaven and the rewards are being handed out, that's when some of us are going to be in real shock. Because some of the people that may be crowned with, you know, incredible glory, we haven't heard of, we know, nobody even knew about them. They were doing the work of God quietly, helping someone else to get to a certain position of prominence. Years ago, I read a book called The Happiest People on Earth by Demos Shakarian. This guy, he was an Armenian and there was a time when, you know, a serious persecution of Armenians. There was war between Armenia and the Turks and they, and they, some say, estimates say about even 2 million people were killed. Anyway, Armenia was actually one of the first Christian nations in Europe, if not the first. It was predominantly Christian and, you know, true Christians, not talking about nominal Christians. So, you know, many, many spiritual Christians in Armenia and they fled. They fled. In fact, there was a, there was a group, a house fellowship, I think that the Lord revealed to them what was going to happen and, and they, all of them fled before the trouble came. Anyway, they went to places like California, you know, set up farms there, became multimillionaires, you know? But this guy, Demos Shakarian, you know, he didn't have the gift of speaking. He couldn't preach. He couldn't teach the word of God, but he was a facilitator, somebody. This is one of the guys who was instrumental to Oral Roberts, Oral Roberts' ministry. Most people have heard about Oral Roberts. Very few people have heard of Demos Shakarian. God will put people on your path. Maybe your job would just be to cook a meal for them and give them some encouragement. Maybe, maybe even give them a little bit of your money. What has happened to their church is that they have destroyed, they've destroyed believers so much that unless a child of God takes his money and gifts it to the pastor, he doesn't feel like he has given money to God. Unless you go to church and they literally empty your pockets there, you don't feel like you've given to God. It is so sad. And the thing is, they wouldn't even allow the Holy Spirit to stir you up to give. No. They will come, they will dip their hand into your pocket and they will take it themselves. Of course, I'm speaking figuratively. And yet, your calling might just be that God will put somebody on your path. And that person may be in a very difficult moment in their lives, either in their lives in general or maybe in their Christianity. Some people, you may Either in their lives in general or maybe in their Christianity. Some people you may come across, they are close to giving up their Christian faith. Because they prayed to God and, and they feel like God didn't answer. Years ago, there was this man of God who he loved God and he was moving in the supernatural gates of God. But they ran into difficulties, ran into serious difficulties and essentially were ready to give up on God. And the wife prayed, she said, Lord, we've helped so many people. In this difficult moment of us, why don't you put someone else on our path so that they, they, they can help us? She didn't finish praying when the phone rang. And when she picked up the phone. It was the voice who was on the other end of the phone, but someone whom. Both her, she and her husband had been bad mouthing, they'd been saying that this guy is a horrible guy. And they'd been friends, but it'd fallen out and, and he would have been saying bad things about this guy. But this lady was so shocked that she put the phone back down. But the person on the other side just knew, no, let me, let me call again, so called. And then she said, I'm so sorry, but I was so shocked. I just wasn't expecting you. I just didn't think it would be you. You know, we've been in this difficult situation. My husband is ready to leave the ministry. We are ready to quit. It's like we're struggling. God used this brother to restore this guy to ministry, to restore them financially. Today he's flourishing in his ministry. God works in different ways and you may become beneficial to the kingdom of God in ways. I mean, Esther didn't, what did Esther do? She, she told the, the, the people to fast. But other than that, there's nothing spiritual about what she did. But she decided, she just took her life in her own hands and she, she went and she met with a king at a time that she could have lost her life. But her act of bravery. Saved the nation. Your path in God's plan may not be glamorous. May not even be known, may be just a quiet thing that you do. But it will bring joy. To the Lord, to heaven. And it will make an impact on earth. It's all part of your inheritance. So justification is the legal or forensic work of. Adjudicating and declaring a person righteous who had correctly and previously been condemned as guilty. For offenses, who had been previously. And correctly condemned as guilty offenses. Justification emphasizes our legal status before and after salvation. For we were all sinners, as Romans three twenty-two, twenty-three tells us, but there is no difference. For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God, being justified freely by his grace. Through the redemption that is in Christ Jesus, Romans three twenty-three. And the punishment for sin is death, Romans six twenty-three. For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life in Christ Jesus our Lord, Romans six twenty-three. Why justification is needed? God does not acquit the wicked. He is just. What if you, a good judge? A good judge is known not for his mercy, but for justice. People don't go to court to look for mercy, they go to look for justice. When someone has pleaded guilty. Acknowledged his mistake, been remorseful. A judge may show some lenience because he can see change in a person. But even then, he doesn't acquit. He will still, he might decide that instead of prison, you'll serve a community sentence, but you still get punished. If God is a good judge. He won't acquit the wicked. He won't look at a wicked man and say, acquitted. That's why Jesus had to die on the cross. Someone had to take the punishment. Only then could you and I be set free. And the Lord made mention of his, this particular trait of his, when he introduced himself to Moses. In the book of Exodus, he says, keeping mercy for thousands, forgiving iniquity and transgression and sin. And that will by no means clear the guilty. Visiting the iniquity of the fathers upon the children and upon the children's children and unto the third and fourth generation. Something that has, you know, this passage has been wrongly understood to mean generational curses. When the Lord was talking about. His ability to pass just judgment upon generations to come. But the generations must also be found guilty, otherwise God will not be just. Abraham asked God, shall the judge of the whole earth do evil? God didn't correct Abraham. On the contrary, his actions in that passage. Shows that he acknowledged that Abraham was right. He will not do evil. Therefore, God will not bring the punishment of fathers upon sons who have not sinned. But what you will see is that judgment will pass from generation to generation in the sense that. The first generation did sin, but God showed mercy and waited. And then waited and eventually the third generation. Faces the, the consequences, not of their father's sins, but of their own sins. So Jesus came to set us free from our legal indebtedness. For Christ also suffered once for sins, then just for the unjust, that he might bring us to God. Being put to death in the flesh but made alive by the Spirit, first Peter three eighteen. Who himself bore our sins in his own body on the tree. That we haven't died to sins, my left for righteousness, by whose stripes you were healed, first Peter two twenty-four. Through his death, Christ served our sentence, paving the way for our release. We are therefore justified offenders. We are free from the legal burden of our sins. That's what's happened. That's all justification and this is really revision because we've touched on it before. Revision is always a good thing, as, as Peter writes about in his letter. Now we're talking about redemption. The action of regaining or gaining possession of something in exchange for payment or clearing a debt. Years ago. If you didn't have money, but you wanted something being sold in the shops. You could go and pay a deposit and they would keep that item for you. So you could pay, say, ten percent or twenty percent or whatever, that gave the. The, the shopkeeper the confidence that you would come back after he had your money. He hadn't given you anything, but he had your money, so he could keep the object for you. And, and it was called a down payment. And then when you finished paying for the whole thing. It was then given to you. And you could also go to a shop and. What we call a pawn shop, give them a valuable item and gets cash. Alone. If you went back and paid the money, you could redeem your possession. You could redeem that which you'd given, so you'd regain possession. But if you set some slaves free, whereabouts, you were also redeeming them. Sometimes we talk about redeeming yourself. That's to do with when you've done something wrong and maybe your reputation has sort of suffered a little bit. But you do something that changes people's perception of you, so you redeemed yourself, you regained your reputation, so to speak. Speak. Now redemption involves the payment of a price. In redeeming us, God paid a price. Now, what did God redeem us from? Years ago, a certain doctrine started, you know, floating around. About how that the devil. Demanded payment. And he told God that the only payment he would accept. In order to release us, because he had all of humanity, though all humanity was in bondage. The devil was holding us prisoners. And he threatened. He asked for a ransom. And that ransom was God's only son. The problem with that thing is that it's not in the Bible. It's nowhere in the Bible we read about the devil demanding. But, pardon me, payment. And that whole doctrine flies in the face of Jesus's own teaching. That no man can. Rob a strong man or let first of all, he overpowers him. And that's referring to the devil. So Jesus didn't pay, God didn't pay the devil anything. On the contrary, he defeated him to set us free. Except that the wisdom of God, or whether the foolishness of God is wiser than the wisdom of men. I'm sort of paraphrasing. And God used the despised things of this earth to shame the wise. The world only knows strength in muscle, in firepower. God said that we use something weak. To defeat the enemy. So it was not in strength that Jesus overcame the devil, it was in weakness, in death. He was crucified in weakness. He prayed, if it be your will, let this cup. Pass over me. And he hung there. He was beaten, he was spat on, he was maltreated. But in doing that. He paid the price for your release. Because here's the deal, much as we were captive. With the, the devils were captive to the devil's devices. The real problem we had was not with the devil. It was with the judge. Because the judge is the one that has the power and he said guilty. The wages of sin is death. So forget about the devil. Sentencing had already been passed on all of us. There was now a need to be set free from that. Because if we were not set free from that, it didn't matter that the devil had us captive. Both us and the devil would have ended up in the lake of fire. But Jesus came and he died. And he paid the price that made it possible for God to say, now you've been cleared. No legal indebtedness before me. And he set us free. It's only because we've been released from our obli- legal obligations towards God. That our victory over the devil even makes sense. Because your victory over the devil makes no sense if you have not been set free from this one. So this was the biggest victory. We were set free from our legal indebtedness to God. God has wiped us clean. And when you read Colossians chapter two, that's what you see. That passage is saying, look, there are people who will come and tell you, you know what? You need to worship God on Saturday. Because the Bible says that, remember the Sabbath and keep it holy. Someone else comes and says, in our church, we believe that before the Lord's supper, you need to wash your feet. Another person says, we believe in tithe and offering. Then someone else says, we believe in face food. Then another person says, we believe in circumcision. What are those guys trying to do? Colossians chapter two says. That all, that's all over the bar. Because none of those things matter when you are a condemned prisoner. It's because we've been set free that you can even start bringing those issue up, issues up. Because what difference does it make whether you worship on Saturday or Sunday if you are going to hell anyway? It's because we've been set free from this big deal. That anybody can now come back and, and start saying things to us. But the question you have to ask yourself is. Did any of those things that people say we must do to please God? Did any of those things set us free when we were on our way to hell? The answer is no, those things were of no use. So if God did not demand any activity from you. In order to set you free, he merely looked at what Jesus did on the cross and set you free. Why, why would you insult God? By insisting that there are now certain things that you must do. In order to be set free or in order to be, to, to warrant his salvation. He did all of this, he made all this provision for you two thousand years ago. You did not play a part in it, I did not play a part in it. The only thing we can do is believe. God is the one that paid the price. If we try to make ourselves pay a price as well, that's a slap in the face of Jesus. That's saying to Jesus, your sacrifice was not good enough. Your sacrifice was not good enough, I've also got to do something else. There are. Men of God going about telling people that they wouldn't go to heaven if they don't pay their tithe. That's telling me that what Jesus did on the cross was not good enough. And that there's something else that a human being can do. That's a slap in the face of Jesus. Anytime you add something to your salvation, anytime you create a new condition, a new box that must be picked. Or checked in order. To be deemed acceptable to God, you have insulted Jesus. That's why if somebody comes to you with that kind of doctrine, please show them the door. Don't entertain it even for a minute. We have been redeemed. It was done long before even we were born. And our redemption is free. So we're talking about what we've been redeemed from. We've been redeemed from the power of, the power of darkness. The kingdom of darkness. For he has rescued us from the dominion of darkness and brought us into the kingdom of the Son he loves. In whom we have redemption, the forgiveness of sins, Colossians chapter one, verse thirteen. Colossians is a wonderful book. It is much like Ephesians, but maybe slightly easier to read. But in Colossians and Ephesians, Paul tries to explain salvation. All the benefits of salvation. So if you want to get a Bets, if you want to get an overview of salvation. You read Colossians and Ephesians, especially chapter one. And when you go to Romans, he takes an aspect of salvation, mainly justification. And the new birth, and then he zeroes in on that. But you and I have been translated, that's the, the term that I think is used in the, um. In, what's it called? In the King James Version, I think. We've been moved from one kingdom into another. The only reason why you might have questions, that you might have doubts. The reason why you might experience oppression in your life. Is because you don't know that you have been delivered. You just don't know. Do you know that when? The emancipation of slavery, once slavery was abolished. And emancipation was declared. Did you know that not everybody became free? I'm talking about the slaves of the USA. Many slaves did not know because the slave owners. did not have a responsibility to tell the slaves that they were, they'd been set free. All they had to do was stay quiet. And since these slaves were not allowed to read newspapers or listen to the radio if radio was, were available in those days, whatever, they were not even allowed to learn how to read because to read, to learn how to read is to be empowered. And once you're empowered, you are dangerous. So they left them in their ignorance. They had been set free legally, there was nothing holding them in their houses or in the, in the plantations, there was nothing holding them, but guess what? They didn't know about it. It turns out that what you don't know is damaging to you. You must know what has happened. You've been set free. God wants you to know. Know as I was preparing for this Bible study, the Lord started, you know, bringing, reminding me, bringing to my attention that Israel's journey from Egypt to the promised land really symbolizes our journey from the world into the kingdom of God. Every believer has been down that path. Even though you may have never been to Egypt, but spiritually you have walked that path. Israel's redemption was a type and a foreshadow. Let's read about it. Now Moses was turning the flock of Jethro, his father-in-law, the priest of Median. And he led the flock to the far side of the wilderness and came to Horeb, the mount of God, the mountain of God. There the angel of the Lord appeared to him in flames of fire within a bush. Moses saw, saw that the bush was on fire. Sorry, Moses saw that though the bush, bush was on fire, it did not burn up. So Moses thought, I will go over and see the strange sight, why the bush does not burn up. When the Lord saw that he had gone over to look, God caught him from within the bush. Moses, Moses, and Moses said, here I am. Do not come any closer, God said, take off your sandals, for the place where you are standing is holy ground. Then he said, I am the God of your father, the, the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac and the God of Jacob. At this, Moses hid his face because he was afraid to look at God. The Lord said, I have indeed seen the misery of my people in Egypt. I have heard them crying out because of their slave drivers. And I am concerned about their suffering, so I have come down to rescue them from the land of, from the hand of the Egyptians and to bring them up out of the land into a good and spacious land, a land flowing with milk and honey, and the home of the Canaanites, Hittites, Amorites, Perizzites, Hivites and Demacites. And now the cry of the Israelites has reached me and I have seen the way of the Egyptians oppressing them. So now go, I am sending you to Pharaoh to bring my people, Israelites, out of Egypt. Exodus three, one to 10. That's a picture of redemption. God says to Moses, I have heard the cry of my people. They're in bondage. But I want to deliver them. And I'm sending you to go and deliver them. Moses was a type of Jesus, a foreshadow. Because just as Jesus had to come to his people, he had to be born amongst them. Then the people had to read, literally believe that this guy that grew up amongst us is actually Messiah. That, that our salvation depends on him. That was the same thing with Moses. He grew up with his parents, because we know the story of how the, you know, he was put in that basket and then rescued by Pharaoh's daughter. But Pharaoh's daughter gave Moses back to Moses's mother through Moses's sister. And therefore Moses was raised by his parents. But when he came of age, and at some point he went to the palace. But then Moses chose to identify with his people. He killed an Egyptian. That blew his cover, it became evident that he was Jewish. And he had to flee. So he fled. Then the Lord met him at Mount Sinai, which we just read about. And the Lord said, I'm sending you to go and rescue my people. What did the Lord do? He gave him miracles to perform. He said, what you have in your hand, said, is a stick, it's a cast on the ground, it turned into a snake. God said, put your hand in your robe, he put it, it turned lepros, white, with leprosy. God said, go and show these people the signs that they'll believe you. What did the Lord Jesus do? He came with miracles. He grew up amongst the people. Moses at birth, Pharaoh had made a decree that all the male children should be killed. But Moses was miraculously rescued. What happened to Jesus at birth? Herod issued a decree to kill all the male children from one year and below. And Jesus was miraculously rescued. So you can see similarities there. That's what God does. He does things just to point. So later on he can call attention to people. All of this has been put there so that if today you were to preach to a Jew, you could just show him. Say, look, your Messiah was painted, a picture of the Messiah was painted for you in the Old Testament. All you need to do is read it. You can literally take the Old Testament and convert somebody. So Moses was a picture of, of the Messiah. Israel's redemption was a picture of a future redemption God had prepared for his people. Egypt is a picture of the world of sin and death, all of which we've been rescued from. As the Israelites were slaves in Egypt, so humanity is caught up in slavery to worldliness, to sin and death. When I say death, I'm not necessarily referring to physical death, for we will all physically die one day. It's appointed unto man to die, and after that comes judgment. You will notice from the Bible that there are different kinds of death, and we will do a study on that. There are different kinds of death, the Bible uses the term death very loosely. It's been used 120 something times in the New Testament and hundreds more times in, in the Old Testament. It's a very commonly used word in the Bible, so please bear that in mind. So when I say we've been rescued from death, I'm not referring to physical death. God sent Moses to deliver his people. Moses was a type and shadow of the Messiah, he was a deliverer. Now Pharaoh tried to kill Moses at birth, so Herod tried to kill Jesus. The people had to believe in Moses. This is key. Do you know that if they had not believed in Moses, their, their, their salvation, their redemption would not have happened? They had to believe in Moses in order to benefit. And God gave Moses miracles to convince the people that Jesus performed miracles. In, in John's Gospel, when he had finished his account of Jesus's life, he said, these things have been written down that you might believe. That Jesus did many miracles, which if we were to write, that we know, there would not be enough books to, to write them in. But these have been written down that you might believe. So clearly, the miracles that Jesus performed, they were there to convince the people that he was the one whom God had promised. Just that as Moses came with his miracles to convince the people that he was indeed coming from God. God paid a price to set the Israelites free. To this day, people deem God to be a bigot, to have brought the place on Egypt just to set the Israelites free. These days, people say all sorts of things about God. You know, there are some things that God does that might end in bad press. It might end in, somebody might misunderstand him. You know, Israel's conquest of the promised land. It's probably the one that is quoted the most sometimes by Muslims. They will say, oh, this is a, a book of Joshua, this. And if I, if I were God, I probably would not do some of those things. Because, not because of whether they are good or bad, but because of what people would say. But God is not bothered by what people would say. It's a price that he has had to pay to bring redemption to his people. A few months ago, we were talking about, is God unfair? God chose Israel, or rather, he chose Abraham, you know, to be more precise, he chose Abraham. But he chose Abraham because he knew Abraham would raise descendants who would allow him to bring his salvation, redemption plan for the whole universe. Abraham became a seed that he preserved so he would be able to bring about his righteous cause on the earth. And because Abraham was disprecious to him, he treated Abraham as special. And there's no need to feel guilty about that. When Abraham came from the conquest of the kings of Mesopotamia, who had con- who had conquered in Sodom and those other places and also captured Lot. Abraham armed his 300 servants, raised in his own house, and he went after those kings. There were seven kings, I think, with their troops. You really believe that Abraham had enough men to defeat those guys? Those guys conquered Sodom and all the cities around. Yet they could not win a battle against Abraham and the 300 men? What do you think was going on there? God rigged that battle in Abraham's favor. He fought for Abraham. So when Abraham was coming from that battle, Melchizedek met him. Blessed be Abraham. Or blessed be the God of Abraham. And he blessed him there. God treated Abraham as a special possession, and I am grateful to God that he did. Because trust me, if he had not done that, if he had not found in Abraham some, a seed to preserve, you and I would not be here today. You and I would not be here today. It's because of his faith that we are here. Because it was through him that the Messiah came. Okay, so let's go back. God paid a price in order to redeem us. And that price, amongst other things, is bad press. Is people saying all sorts of things about him. God commanded the Israelites to celebrate the Passover before leaving Egypt. You know, you can go read Exodus, you know, chapters 10 all the way to 14, you know, and, and during the final plagues into, into Israel's departure. And you will discover by the Passover, they were commanded to eat the Passover before leaving Egypt. And if you think about it, it almost doesn't make any sense. So that same night, the firstborn sons of Egypt were going to be all killed. And that was this, that was the final plague that would force Pharaoh's hand and make Pharaoh feel like, okay, you know what, it's okay, you guys can leave. But that same night, God said, I want you to eat a meal. I mean, of all things to do on the night of your rescue, it doesn't strike me as what you should be doing. You know, get your things packed, get ready, you know, standing close to the door. No, God said, shut your doors. Put blood on the, on the, on the wind, on the lintels and, and, on the doorpost. Kill a lamb, roast the meat, eat it with unleavened bread and bitter herbs. Eat it with your clothes tucked into your belt, in those days they wore gowns. But if you were about to run or something, you would tuck it under a belt. So he said, tuck it in, buckle your belt, that's what you would say today. Because you are about to take off. And eat in that manner. What was that all about? All of this was pointing to our future salvation. Let's see. The Israelites were instructed to eat the lamb with unleavened bread. Let's read about it. That same night, they are to eat the meat roasted over the fire along with bitter herbs and bread made without yeast. Do not eat the meat raw or boiled in water, but roast it over a fire with the head, legs and internal organs. Now, he says, this is how you are to eat it, with your cloak tucked into your belt, that's referred to your, your robe, into your belt, your sandals on your feet and your stuff in your hand. Can you imagine, that's how you're supposed to eat it? Eat it in haste. It is the Lord's Passover. Exodus 12, 12. The previous passage is also from Exodus 12, and that was from verse eight to verse nine. So you see a very, very strange picture here. This was not a party, even though God said roast meat. Because normally, you know, in a, in an agrarian society, you know, the animals are the source of cash. So they don't just kill an animal and just eat it like that, like, you know, I want to have a sandwich, let's just kill a goat. No, they don't do that, they didn't do that. You would only kill an animal if you wanted to have a feast or you had some very, you know, distinguished guest. God said, I want you to have a feast. But I don't want you to have a feast in party mood. Well, by your dumping around here and drinking, and then, no, 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 you're not going to be doing any of that. You're not even going to even eat it with bread with le- lemon, because lemon, yeast, you know, is a symbol of sin. You're not going to eat it with lemon. One of the things that has, that's plaguing Christianity of today is the message of sloppy agape. What do I mean by that? Whereby people emphasize grace, the grace of God so much that sin doesn't matter anymore. Oh, we've been saved, oh, God's grace. Hey, wait a minute. In the Old Testament, they told them to eat the Passover without yeast, and the yeast represented sin. What do you think the New Testament is about? Go and read. Paul writes, Christ, a Passover lamb has been crucified for us, has been slain for us. Therefore let us celebrate the feast without the yeast of sin. I think it's in First Corinthians. So it's a total misunderstanding. That's why I always like to go to the Old Testament first before coming to the New Testament. Because if you don't go to the Old Testament, you don't have context. That's when people take passages out of context and then teach and then make a big deal of it. No. When the Bible talks about holiness in the New Testament, it's not optional. It's something that we are supposed to, it's supposed to be a, a, a governing principle of our, like guiding principle, sorry, of our lives. Because it was part of the Passover meal that they had to eat. This was not a party. God said, I mean, I insist that you eat it and you eat it exactly like this. Because all of that was a symbol of our salvation, of our redemption. Redemption is about being set free from a predicament that you despise. Nobody, imagine that you are having a, a party, you are enjoying yourself, you are happy with your friends. Then somebody comes, your wife or somebody comes and drags you out. And he says, they are redeeming you from this party. But you were having fun. How can that be redemption? Redemption, you get redeemed from a situation that you hate, you despise, a situation that is bringing you down. That was the symbol there. Lest you forget what you are being redeemed from. And we all know the story, that it didn't take long before they forgot what they had been redeemed from. They said, in Egypt, we were sitting around pots of meat with cucumber and garlic. I see there's any flavor in cucumber. I don't know about you guys. I see there's any flavor in cucumber. I don't know about you guys, but it's just a tasteless thing, just a vegetable. And they were, they were complaining to God over cucumber. Lest you forget. You forget why you were redeemed and what you've been redeemed from. Eat with your stuff in your hand, buckle your belt properly. Put your sand, your feet, your sandals on your feet, then eat. Because the announcement will come that you may leave, and when the announcement comes, you don't waste your weight. You are off, you are off. Because that guy might change his mind. As we know from the story, they will change his mind later and pursue them. What happened afterwards? The Israelites left Egypt, and if you study the map of Israel and Egypt very well, you discover that you get from Egypt. It's a short distance. You know, people are talking about the Gaza War. You can literally go across Gaza and then boom, you're in Egypt. It's a short, 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 short distance. But God said, let's not use that route, that Gaza route. Why? Because if they use the Gaza, Gaza route, they would meet the Philistines there. Because that's, that was their territory, and those were, they loved war. So, you know, Goliath's people, and God said, these guys, they haven't learned faith yet. They haven't learned how to trust me yet. If they go and they see that kind of battle, they will crumble, they will all run back into Egypt. So I'm going to use a different route, a longer route. And most importantly, I'm going to do something bizarre, something that makes no sense. I'll lead them through a wilderness and then I'll lead them to the Red Sea. We don't have time to read all of that, I'll summarize it. But when they got to the Red Sea, the Bible says, they lifted up their eyes and they saw the Egyptians behind them. On horseback, they were coming. Steep in front of them. Egyptians behind, behind them. On the left and right, there were mountains, steep cliffs. Do you know what the Pharaoh said? The wilderness has shut them in, has hemmed them in, were locked, there was nowhere to go, and they screamed. The Lord said to Pharaoh, what's there in your hand? Have you not got that stick? Stretch it. Moses stretched that stick on the water and the what? And the water and it split in half and the Israelites walked through. When they got to the other side, they could not believe it. Miriam got her tambourine out. They started dancing, jumping, hallelujah, glorifying God. But they didn't quite understand what had just happened. Before they crossed, do you know what Moses did? He told the people, he said, these Egyptians that you are seeing, you will see no more. You won't see them anymore. I don't think they understood the message. The crossing of the Red Sea was God putting a barrier. Between Egypt and Israel, psychological barrier. You had to go through the sea to break free from these guys. So that each time you look back, you will see a barrier of the sea. What is that a symbol of? Going through the Red Sea, First Corinthians chapter ten says, was a symbol of baptism. We are baptized into the death and resurrection of Christ. So that there may be a barrier between us and the world. Remember, I told you Egypt represents the, the world. And sin and death. So that we may never feel like going back to our old life. So when Miriam was dancing with the people, that was the joy of salvation. The joy that the woman at the well, the Samaritan woman at the well, you remember how that woman went running and dancing and telling the people that. I've, I've, I've met the Messiah. That's called the joy of salvation. The joy that led Zacchaeus to say, you know what? If I have taken anything from somebody, I restore it four times, fourfold. That's the joy of salvation. The, the Israelites experienced it. What they experienced when they crossed the Red Sea, that's what we experience when we are saved, the joy of salvation. But after that joy of salvation, do you know what comes next? First, there was no water. They got to Mara. And they got bitter, just as the water there was also bitter. Because they had forgotten what had just happened. The life of Israelites is nothing. But an example for us to follow. We won't be able to finish it, so I'll just, I'll just end here. In the whole story. It's a picture of our redemption. That their struggles in the wilderness, they are a picture of our struggles. And if we can understand it, if we can understand their story well and draw applications from it. Trust me, we will experience much greater victory in our lives than we, than we are doing currently. Okay, I'll stop here and quickly go back and round up, and as usual, we will go around and get your views on, on today's session. So we started by saying that there are many facets of salvation, justification, redemption, reconciliation, new birth, adoption. We said that God has different ways of emphasizing the same thing. That justification emphasizes the legal aspects, redemption, the liberation secured through the payment of a price. Reconciliation emphasizes the restoration of our relationship with God. New birth, God emphasizes how he has given us a new nature. And an identity in Christ. And adoption emphasizes how we've been brought into God's family as sons and daughters. Benefits, the benefits of salvation, we said that we've been forgiven and we have peace with God. We said that the curtain in the, in the temple was torn in half when Jesus died on the cross. But that paved the way into the Most Holy Place, so that today we can see into the Most Holy Place, it was forbidden. I mean, I'm speaking figuratively. The Most Holy Place signifies the presence of God. We have peace with God, we can walk into his presence. And we said, we've been set free from the bondage to sin and the legal indebtedness to God. You and I were indebted to God, but he has. Turn to bed, he has shredded the evidence. That points to your legal indebtedness and says, paid in full, Jesus has done it. Translated from one kingdom to another, we said, we no longer part of the devil's kingdom, he no longer has access, he doesn't have control over you. But unless you know that, you will experience oppression sometimes. We've been empowered to know and to do God's will. We said, everybody here is on this earth for a purpose. There's something God has in mind. When he created you, he had something in mind. We used the story of Esther. Esther, Mordecai told Esther, who knows if you were, you came into the kingdom for such a time as this? You, you came to the kingdom for a reason, you were brought here for a reason. We said that your task in God's kingdom may not be a glamorous one, you may never be a preacher, but you can change somebody's life. Maybe with an act of kindness, a small act of kindness. Good. Then we went on to start talking about redemption. And we likened it to Israel's going through the wilderness. We will return to this topic of redemption next time, expand on it a, a little bit. And, and take it from there. So now let's open the floor for anybody who would like to ask questions or who would like to, who has a contribution to, to make. Good. Who wants to go first? Abba, you've been here from the beginning, anything to, oh, okay, Barco, you go your hand up, yes, please, feel free.
I think the whole issue of salvation, we had looked at it from, Jesus came to die and then just. You know, gave us the access to Christ. But from what you have just exposed to us. Is telling us that the whole principle of salvation is not based on just Christ came to die on the cross. But God had followed a principle right from the time that Adam sinned. And brought us, all of us into, um, sin. And then led us gradually to the redemption of man. I am really, um, in fact, I'm finding it's, um, a bit, uh, what should I say? Uh, it's like. The agenda of, you know, God bringing salvation to us has so many faces that looking at it from various angles. We should be able to live a better life and then a life that will please God than what we even see now. I'm really grateful for what you have presented to us today. God bless you.
God bless you too. Yes, I think you, you summed it up perfectly that, you know, the salvation. I think when we began the Bible study, one of the things we said was that salvation is not an afterthought. It's not like God started, created heaven and earth, created Adam and Eve, and it was all fine, then they sinned, and then God said, oh. What do I do now? Hey, okay, okay, I'll just send my son to die for them, then I'll grab all of them, they go to heaven, and then we live happily ever after. If God is an intelligent being, the person that actually created intelligence. If God is an intelligent being, that message makes no sense, which is what we've been preaching. Man are saying, uh, then Christ saved, it doesn't make sense. You created heaven and the earth, you created a beautiful place called earth, you put man there. He messed up, he sinned. And then your, your answer is, okay, uh, I'll just remove them, they'll go to heaven, and then what about the earth that you created? Why did you create it? The whole thing doesn't make sense. Meanwhile, all the answers are in the Bible. There is a reason why when Jesus died. He didn't take his disciples with him to heaven. He said, I am not asking that you be. Father, I'm not asking you to take them from this world, but to keep them. Why? Because the action is still here on earth. God has a purpose here on earth. That he wants to fulfill before he decides that the whole thing is now done. And salvation is the means by which God puts his plan that went. Arrive in the, in the, in the, in the Garden of Eden, that plan is put back on course. By salvation, with salvation. And he also painted a picture of salvation in the Old Testament. Why? Because this salvation really, the first beneficiaries were supposed to be Abraham's descendants. It's natural. Imagine that you worked hard, you earned a lot of money. And you didn't get a chance to pass the money on to your children. Does that make sense? Of course, you want to pass it to your descendants. Therefore, the salvation, when Abraham. Of all the nations around, Abraham was the only one that committed himself to God. God wanted everyone, but only Abraham did. So God said, because you have done this, I will bless you, I will bless your descendants, and I will use you and your descendants. To bless all nations. Therefore, they are the channel through whom God blesses us. So the whole thing, this, it's, it's perfectly orchestrated. And even when he was redeeming the Israelites from Egypt, God said, I will use this to paint you a picture of the salvation that's coming. There's nothing in the Bible that's accidental. When you start, everything starts to fall into peace. All you can do is just kneel down and just raise your hand and just glorify God, you know? I could, I could go on and on, but I'm sure other people have contributions. Please unmute yourself or, you know, put your hand up if you've got a contribution or question.
We leave everyone, we leave the class, this is.
Yes, that's, that is here.
Okay. Well, uh, I guess, I'm not, you know, I, I can't, I don't know what to read in text. It's for. Um, okay, love before this, uh, because, um. You said something, and I, I'm not sure if I heard you. Right. You said something about the fact that, you know, Jesus, that, you know, do something, he did this, or, I mean. Um, you, that was right from the beginning about going to. Um, dealing, uh, crusaders, you know, you said something about that.
Yes, I did.
Yeah. So then I was thinking that, if there's no need for that, then I was thinking, what about like deliver services? That sometimes, you know, because you just say, we need to be delivered, you know? Uh, I've had a personal experience, um, in twenty nineteen. Uh, uh, the, the, you know, it was just like, uh, you said a pastor, a bishop, and. Esther, he said, you need to be delivered, I was supposed to be a thirty princess, I don't know. With my family, I don't know, it gives. First line I was going to. So when you say, I, I, I guess, you know, it flashed my mind, and I said. So, and you know, you said that, so I need to be delivered and all this. From what you are saying, because at that time, I was confused, I said, do I really need to deliver, you know? So, yeah, it's a lot. And then, um, you said something about, not everybody can be. A preacher, a man of, you know, like, a minister of. But then, small act of kindness for someone. You know, and it's like, we, we are always looking at bigger things.
Yeah.
And not the small things that maybe we were even, you know, called to do.
Yeah.
Um, it's like, it's like, yeah, you have to do the same thing. Then, you know, we overlook the little things that we are supposed to do. To fulfill our purpose, and, you know, it's a lot, I was just, uh. My mind is so, it's full, so. I don't, I don't, I don't know what to pick up the angles from.
Yeah, 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 I encourage you to, to watch, listen to it. Um, then the audio is put on the platform, maybe just later tonight or tomorrow. Listen again and, and then process it and, you know, dwell on it, because. Usually with the word of God, the first time we hear it, we benefit, but, you know, if we, if we keep going back, we will get even more. Yeah. Good. God bless you. So, um. Who, let's see, who wants to go next? Um, Reverend, can I see anything to share with us?
No, nothing in particular, thank you.
Okay, okay, all right, good. Uh, Sue, I don't know what time you joined. Anything, any questions, anything to share? Okay, I'll come to you, um, class prefects, let's hear your voice. Uh, your, your students are missing you, so.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening, Sister Ava. I, I really miss you. It feels good to be back. Well, today I didn't join from the very beginning, but.
Okay.
I think that it, it was so loaded, like, sometimes it looks as if. I am almost dozen, then you say something and I just come back to, like, and it's, and it was. I, i- it's, it's like, I don't know, the, the whole salvation that was preached was a scam, like. It was, it was a scam. And, and I, i- it's, I now understand why. Christians have become like gullible and falling to a lot of the schemes of. The devil, because the whole begin, like, the whole thing, like, as you said. Sometimes I, we sit down and think that, oh, T, Abba, bueno, we just came, Christ redeemed us from sin. So that we live a righteous life and be taken to heaven. That's all in between that and heaven, you know, it's like heaven is the ghost, there's nothing else. That's all in between that and heaven, you know, it's like heaven is the ghost, there's nothing else. But the package was more beautiful than that.
Yeah.
And because we, we, we were sold half-truth, you know, or eh, it like, it has opened the door for deception. And eh, for us to live medievalized or lives like n- not be able to achieve our purpose or fulfill our purpose because we don't have the right knowledge to do that. So I think this is one message that I would love to listen to over and over because and I think Sister Ava was probably reading my mind or, because I think the very things that I would have touched on, she seemed to have touched on on them. And I think that you are doing an amazing job. I urge everyone to go back to the me- this message, because that is the fundamental. It is, it's like all other, your, all all other, um, theories that, or, or all other things that comes out of Christianity. I think the very basis of of our Christianity is understanding our salvation. It it it, it's not all about heaven. Thank you for bringing us this knowledge.
Thank you, thank you. God bless you. Okay, I think Sister Loretta, you're the only one left now. Anything to share with us? Any questions?
No, please, I'm okay today.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Good. So, um, thank you all very much for joining us today and God bless you. Have a lovely weekend. And we shall meet again next week by God's grace.